Do you have anything that would be giving you feedback?
Joanne, you're clear. Mandy's talk again. Can we hear you?
Hello?
That's better.
Yeah, now you froze, though. Your picture froze. Mandy's. There you are. Okay.
I'll be right back. Let me kick it.
Sound was good that time. Where's she going?
That was better. Except that I can't hear very well.
All right. All right, so it's 5:36. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I don't see anybody there for open forum. There's Mandy. So I would like a motion to accept the consent agenda. Someone?
Move to accept the consent agenda. Sorry.
Jamie moves and Livy seconds. Okay. Give me a chance. I'm gonna do something a little different this time. I'm gonna ask Joanne for comments and then I'm gonna ask Mandy for comments. So does anybody have any corrections or additions to any of the minutes that you received? There are three sets of minutes. Okay. Then
I don't have any, any, I do not have changes to the minutes. I think they're probably a really good reflection of probably what happened.
Okay, great. Then I'm gonna have Joanne. Do you have anything to add or expound upon from your director's report?
Well, the
Okay, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. One thing I have, can you hear me now?
It's very soft.
Barely.
We can't hear you well.
Let me just move up close to the microphone.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Better.
A little better.
So I'll try to talk loud. One thing I need to add is I had a call today from Becky Brooks. She is the director of CASA. And they are looking into putting together a fundraiser. And the fundraiser is through an organization called Over the Edge. And what they do is it's a company. And she wondered if we would just be willing to listen and entertain the idea from the company, but they're looking for a tall building and what they do is like kinda like the Hunger Walk where each participant pays a small fee to participate and then they, they raise money for, to be donated to the organization. And so people would have the opportunity to repel off of the building. I did tell her we have cellular equipment and she checked with the company and they said that wasn't an issue. Of course, I had concerns about liability and insurance and all of that good stuff. And she said she understood and I said, you know, first I said, well, I'll be willing to listen to them. I did get online and researched them a little bit. I'll be willing to listen, but only with legal counsel on the phone. But you know, as I got to looking at the pictures that they had on their website and you can look it up, it's over the edge. I think it's overtheedge.com. I can send it out to you later, but it looks like what they've been repelling off of for their fundraisers are in much bigger cities than ours and they have a lot of tall, like, business buildings. So I'm assuming they do this stuff like on weekends or something when the buildings are at least mostly not occupied. And I, that got me to thinking, you know, I don't know about them repelling off a building when there's residents actually living in the building and residents that have disabilities such as anxiety and paranoia and those kinds of things. So I did tell her on the phone that before I would schedule anything to listen that this is not scheduled to take place until next year in October. And I explained to her, I said, I won't even be here then. And I said, so, but in either case, in any case, I think it would be better to run it by the board and see if it's something they would even want us to entertain or
What are they raising money, what are they fundraising for?
CASA, Sunflower CASA, Court of Point and Special Advocates. You know, the fundraisers that I saw coming up look like they're in much bigger cities with much different kind of buildings than this. I don't know. And the other thing that worries me is it's not like the people that are trained to do repelling, doing the repelling. It's the people raising the money and apparently the company gives them training and what have you beforehand, but I don't know. It sounds scary to me.
I, I don't think that we can, I don't think it's a good idea for our building to be involved in that.
I agree with Jan.
I would want, I would want to see something in writing from them. We have nothing to even refer to and about what the, what the proposal really is and Joanne, we can't hear you. And so I don't feel like I was able to follow the whole of the proposal either, or your presentation.
Linda, I sent a link related to the company and what they do in the chat section. Here's my concern. I, I think if we look at this from the perspective of it being a home, these are people's homes. How would you feel if on a Saturday, people were repelling off of the side of your house? Because that's effectively what we're, they're asking us to do is to allow them to repel off of the site of people's homes. That is very different for me than a business. I'd be all for it if a business, if the liability checked out, but it just seems really strange to me to put tenants even in a position where people are jumping off of their house.
Yeah, this, I, I agree. I, I don't, I don't think this needs a whole lot of discussion, Joanne. I, I just don't think it's a good idea.
Okay, I'll just let her know then that we're really not interested in listening. Wasting their time or ours.
Well, and I would also say that as someone who is in the process of becoming a CASA advocate, I mean, so I will say that if we could help them out, we would, but this just does not seem even remotely appropriate.
Yeah, the more I, I looked at the online, the stuff online, I didn't have much information on the phone either. She did follow up with an email and Linda, can you hear me any better?
Hardly at all. I think Jan's having trouble too.
Let me see if this works.
Can you put your speaker up to max?
My speaker, it's not
Oh, there you go. Now I can hear you.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just hold the microphone.
Okay.
Okay, great. Much better.
I didn't even have much information at all either when I said we would listen, but only with legal counsel on. And then she followed up with an email and actually sent me the link to the organization. And as I got to looking in there, I just, I started feeling more and more uncomfortable about it, but I had told her I would, I would bring it forward, so there you have it.
I mean, This isn't to say that CASA isn't a good organization. We are pro CASA. We are not pro having tenants have people jump out off of their home.
Agreed. And I asked them if they had considered maybe like the fire department training building. And they said they had, but they, they don't have an elevator to get their equipment up on the roof. And that seemed to be a problem, so. And they had, she said they had been turned down by several organizations or several businesses of other, you know, other buildings, hotels, and I know one was the Holiday Inn at the campus. And
I would recommend that, I suggest that she talks to Ward Morgan or whoever's running his business, that big building over there.
The Civics Plus building?
Ward Morgan's business. What is it called? I can't think.
Civics Plus?
Yeah. He also owns several of the buildings downtown, so.
You know, like the Tap House.
I would recommend that they look at other fundraising opportunities because this one sounds like a huge liability.
To me, I would say the same thing. I thought, man, I, I just don't even, each participant has to raise a thousand dollars to do the job. And if they don't raise a thousand dollars, the money they do raise goes straight to the organization. And plus, they have to pay fifty dollars to participate, so I said, I just don't even know how much success they would have in a town this size.
Okay, we have, we have a lot of stuff to get through tonight, so I think the general consensus is we can't help them with this and we don't think it's a good idea for them. Anything else for your report, Joanne?
Um, I do believe there was something else I was gonna tell you, but I don't remember what it was. Hope I think of it later, I'll tell you.
Okay. And Mandy, do you have, would you like to go over any of the information in your report?
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, sorta.
Um, so we hired a new maintenance worker to we're going to fund him out of the CARES Act funding that FNCI got. They have around twenty thousand dollars to spend. And then we shifted another maintenance worker to position salary over to come out of the public housing funds and we have about thirty-three thousand left in the CARES Act money to spend. We're also starting to utilize those funds for regular cleaning expenses, carpet replacement, any type of unit turnover expenses that we're having to try to get the units turned over faster. Good news is we added money to reserves this month and I'm projecting in October maybe not as much this month, but at least a couple thousand would be good. And then we're preparing for a seventy-five thousand dollar EPC payment that we need to make in December, so trying to save as much money as we can to get that paid. Joanne and I have talked about approaching them to see if maybe we can switch our due dates to around the January area instead of instead of in June and December, so that would kinda help our financials out a little bit at the end of the year. But it looked like when I got the report back from HUD, we added about four points to our financial score for September, so that's always good from going from zero and I think we're up to either seven or eight now for September, so we hope by, by the end of the year to at least have nine in that category. So that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for, about anything in the consent agenda? Okay, I call the question, Mandy. What?
I'm gonna just add to Mandy's report. Can you guys still hear me?
Not very well.
I think it's the microphone.
Well, sit by the mic, put it, hold on to it. We heard you when you did that.
Okay, how about now?
That's better. Okay.
I was just gonna add to Mandy's report to say that I had tried to call PMC Bank a couple of, well, I've tried to call her twice and I've emailed her twice to discuss the possibility of moving our EPC payment to the first of the year versus the last of the year, so our end of the year score would always look a little better. And I thought maybe since interest rates are down so far, we could see if there was a possibility of refinancing and reducing that payment. But I never did get a call back or an email back, which was unusual. And the other day we got a notice of intent to sell our financing to another bank. So that's probably why I haven't heard back from her. So as soon as I can get some contact information, I will contact the new bank and see what, if there's any possibility of, of doing that. I, I hate to see, I hate to move away from PMC because they've been, always been so willing to work with us, but there's nothing we can do to change that, so.
Okay. Okay, if that's it on the consent agenda, Mandy, I call the question.
Jan?
Yes.
Linda?
We're having trouble?
Yes.
Yes.
And Kennedy?
Yes.
And Livy?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Joanne, you're gonna have to get close to that microphone and give us a COVID update.
Somebody needs to tell me if I start fading because this microphone tends to kind of go to sleep, I think. But there, there really isn't anything to update. I mean, we're still doing the same thing we've been doing and I, I just really don't see us opening before the end of the year at this point, the way things are going and if then, you know, one of the things we were talking about today is how are stores gonna handle Black Friday sales? Gosh, I would hate to see that start another problem in our area. But I, you know, I guess, does the board want me to leave that on the agenda or just report it under my report if something changes?
I think that would be okay. To add it to your report, unless something big comes up, then you need to let us know.
Yeah, I really don't see anything changing in the next couple months.
No, I think you're right.
In the last day or two, the governor has, is making thirty-six million dollars or something in COVID, CARES money available for tenants and landlords who are affected by COVID. The landlord and the tenant have to make application for the money. And so I'm, I'm wondering if you have some tenants that you would work with to make that happen. There's a website called kansashousingcorp.org. So it's the Kansas Housing Corporation, anyway.
Yes.
Dot org. And that's where the, the two, the two entities, the tenant, and it can be for mortgages also. But I think you may have to make the case, like, if, if an employer were cutting back and the person lost their job or has to be, I would assume, something, but it just says rent, you know, it would pay for up to nine months if the person couldn't make their rent payment. Now, I don't think I see thirty-six million dollars going on for a long time, so I think it's something you'd have to get too quickly, but I did want to bring it to your attention and see if it's something that you, you keep in mind. You have some tenants that are needy, I'm sure you do. And it would be good to have someone work with them.
And what was that called again, Linda?
Um, it's, the governor's office had a press conference today and announced that it's Kansas, hold on. Housing.
Kansas Eviction Prevention Program.
Yep, can, Kansas Housing Corp.org is what I wrote down, so I don't know.
Linda, we have gotten information about that and I just, today printed, or I think yesterday, actually, printed out flyers for landlords and tenants.
All right.
Most of our, our, the tenants that were delinquent have gotten caught up through the help of Shepherd's Crossing and the emergency shelter.
Uh huh.
And the emergency shelter, well, I think the emergency shelter and Shepherd's Crossing both have actually paid some tenants up through December that were behind, so the majority of our tenants that were behind have been caught up.
Wonderful.
The couples that are behind right now, well, there's two that are seriously delinquent and one of them was not really a COVID issue, it was a matter of his money was being transferred to a trust and he really didn't have access to it, but we have had communication with the people that are handling that and they, they are taking care of getting the payment made. And the other one is not a COVID-related issue. Or we don't believe that it is, so we, we will be sending her the, the declaration under the CDC eviction moratorium. And, you know, if, if she responds that it is COVID-related for some reason, we will definitely try to get her in touch with this program and assist her in doing that because I know that, that we, we would have to participate as some landlord. But you're right, Linda, that they have to they have to be able to prove their, the relationship between COVID, which is a bit different from the CDC moratorium. All they have to do is sign the moratorium, or the declaration, it's up to the up to us if we want to pursue making them prove that or not, if we believe there's, have reason to believe it's not related to COVID. Additionally, it was my understanding that the maximum on the Kansas Eviction Prevention Program was five thousand dollars. So, I mean, that would cover either one of the two that are seriously delinquent, but
I'm, I'm glad you were able to cover the back rent. That will help us in HUD's eyes because one of the things they were looking at was our delinquent accounts or the accounts receivable. But I also think that there's room for this program because it can go out nine months on any kind of rent. And some, I believe that some of these local programs will be spent up. I think this nine-month one will be too, as when you apply it statewide, but thank you. I just wanted to bring it up and make sure that you were following up with, on it as the others. And I'm glad that the public housing tenants can use it. That was one of our concerns in the beginning was whether or not they could. Okay, thank you.
And we will be sending it, those flyers out to landlords and Section 8 tenants as well.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm moving through the reports. Whoops! I just fell down. All right, the next thing would be the report on the rental, on the RAB thing. You had a phone call about that?
We did, and not much happened on that phone call. We talked about the proposals, the number of proposals that we got in and who they were from. At that point, the committee had not had them or had them long enough at least to evaluate them. So the, the technical assistance girl Sheila did tell us that she was familiar with three out of the five that had responded. And the ones that she was familiar with, she, she felt they all did good work. So I think that was the majority of the call. Our next one is scheduled for the twenty-ninth, is that Tuesday? I think so. Well, whatever next Tuesday is at ten AM, I believe, I will send out the link to everybody, the call-in information, so you can call in for it. It is call-in, it is not Zoom.
Okay, so so what is the next thing? Do we have to choose one of those or what's the next thing we have to do?
It's on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Award the contract.
Okay, okay. All right.
Joanne, it's actually on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh at ten AM.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we're gonna go down to C and I'm gonna make a couple comments about the phone call. I, I heard a lot of stuff. I heard three, three, what I think are significant things. Number one, they are not gonna rewrite that review. They evidently pick comment, pick comments off a list of comments and they, they say they can't change them and they don't care if we think it's wrong, they're not changing it. The second thing I heard was we should sell Carlson Plaza. And the third thing I heard was we should get rid of public housing and do all vouchers. And I think of all of the stuff that they said and that whole argument, and as frustrating as it was for me, I think those, those two items are very telling about what, where they're going and what they want. And I'm not sure that we agree with them or we should do those things, but I see that that's where HUD's going with public housing. Anybody else have, anything else they wanna say about that? Joanne, have you heard any more?
I did talk with them today, with Patty Bennett and Ron Snyder. We had a good, long conversation today and they, I think they sense our hesitation to just say, yeah, okay, we'll reposition. Or we'll sell Carlson Plaza, or we'll do anything. And I expressed to them what our concerns were, what my concerns are. They, one of my concerns was that oh, this fly is about to drive me nuts. One of my concerns was that if we should decide to reposition to all project-based vouchers, how in the heck are we supposed to pay all these bills on administrative fees? They don't give us enough now to pay the bills for just the Section 8 program. And one thing I learned is it's not just the administrative fees. We would get what we're getting now in subsidy plus administrative fees. And, you know, I said, well, you know, I, I just gotta see it on paper. I gotta see the impact on paper. And that's something that I can sit down and do, but it's just gonna take, it's not, it's not something that's gonna take five minutes. And so and the other thing is, you know, we don't have the CNA back yet. We don't know, we haven't even contracted the CNA yet, but we don't, we don't know how that's gonna come back. If it doesn't come back, it's sixty-two and a half percent of total development cost for Carlson Plaza, I don't know that they're gonna let us sell Carlson Plaza. They might, or they might not. That's number two. Number three, I said Number three, I said, you know, if we remain public housing, I agree, but nobody here disagrees that Carlson Plaza needs some major work.
What is number three? I can't hear you.
Okay, let me check my microphone again.
I'd, I'd rather have to turn mine down.
I'm trying, Linda, I'm trying.
That's better. That was louder. Now I can't hear you at all. Are you talking? Joanne, if you're talking, we don't hear anything. We don't hear anything. Nothing.
No.
Okay. You came in my.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay. Did it turn green or what did we do? Okay. Anyway, um, now I forgot what number three was. Oh, yeah, we don't know if, if the CNA is gonna come back, that Carlson Plaza requires 62 and a half percent of total development cost per unit. To know if we even can dispose of it or if they will um allow us to sell it. I told them, what I told them on the phone today is I don't think we have thrown it totally out of the question, but we're not convinced yet either, there's just more information that we need, whether we do something with Carlson Plaza or we reposition all of our units. There's, we just don't have enough answers right now and it's a big change if we do that and we have to be able to explain it to the residents if we're gonna do this. And I don't feel, at this point, I don't, wouldn't feel comfortable explaining the first part of it to the residents. Much less understand the financial impact it's gonna have, you know? Financial impact is important, but it's also important that we know how this is going to affect our residents and the community, so that's kind of where I left it with them. I, I also, we're gonna talk about the action plan again, I also, they are working on the language in the what was that tab called? The performance indicators?
Yeah, the page two.
Yeah, the second tab of the spreadsheet, they were working on it. I also made some suggestions just for my own notes, so when it comes through, I have something to reference, we'll see how they compare when it comes back, it will have to come back to you all for approval.
All right, I, I also, there were two other things that were said in, on that phone call that was, were new information to me. The first one was that we can empty an apartment and store the stuff in another apartment that we can take offline. That was all totally different than anything I have understood previously. And that also seems like a very labor-intensive activity to me. And weird.
Jan, um, there are certain things that you can take units offline for, you can take, so for instance, at a Flin Hills place, um, we have two public housing units that are offline because they're being used for office space for the leasing office.
Okay.
That's one reason you can do that. Another reason you can do that is, and in this instance, it's for storage of tenant, I abandoned tenant items. So, what they're saying, what I was explaining to them is, is that according to Kansas law, if a tenant moves out of their apartment and abandons anything of value or things like, you know, all their furniture, their electronics and that kind of thing, we have to advertise for 30 days to let them know and that we're going to sell the items or dispose of the items and give them the opportunity to come back and pay their balance and pick up their items. What they, what HUD is saying is the HUD regulations do allow you to take a unit or two units, whatever, offline, so they wouldn't count against you as vacancy days, and use them for storage of those tenant items. Instead of storing the tenant items in the apartment they vacated so that we can get in there and turn that unit over for re-renting. Does that make more sense?
No, that, I, that's exactly what I understood.
Okay.
But does Kansas law let us do that?
HUD law lets us do that, Kansas law doesn't care what you do with your unit.
All right.
HUD regulations allow us to do that, we've had units offline here uh for uh Computer Lab.
Okay, all right, so, all right, that, so we should do that. Um, and then my other question is, as part of your director's report, I would like to see included how many units are, are empty and, but are not ready to be rented.
It's included in your report this month.
Yeah, I did see it this month and, and I think we, and I think we need, what's it gonna take to get those ready to rent?
Well, it's gonna take a full maintenance staff, which we now have, but we just got the full staff this month.
Right, but how fast can we do that? What is it, what it is, what does it entail?
It entails, it depends on the unit. You know, we have one unit here that they're gonna be able to go in, sanitize, clean the carpet, and it is done. They left it in that good a condition. We have another unit down the hall from that unit that it is, I won't say destroyed, but it's in pretty poor shape. We have another unit upstairs that the, the tenant went to jail, waited out his 30 days and, and Patrick did um kind of try to work with him because he kept calling after he got out of jail saying he was coming to get his stuff and never did. But it's got everything that was in the unit the day he went to jail, which is everything he owned in the unit yet, so that means they're gonna have to empty out the entire unit, move all his furniture, pack up all his personal belongings or throw them away and um paint the unit, most likely.
Yeah.
Fix any damage, um, clean and sanitize, um, clean carpets and any maintenance issues that may be um in there. But you know, when they clean, they have to clean stove, they have to clean refrigerator, um stove and oven, they have to clean refrigerator. You know, painting is probably the thing that takes the longest and when we hired this maintenance worker two and promoted the custodian to maintenance worker two, there was two things that the maintenance understood and that is, one, that maintenance worker twos are gonna have to pick up the duties as a custodian because we're not promoting and hiring another custodian. And now that you've got two maintenance worker twos and a maintenance worker one, you guys are gonna have to start doing your own painting, no contracting it out to cut those contract costs down. And so, painting is probably gonna take the longest of any of them, but you know, I'm, I'm gonna be honest, some units are left in very, very good condition, like the first one I described. Some units are almost destroyed um after they, they're done moving out and are full of trash and full of whatever they didn't want to take with them. And you know, it, it just depends on what they find in there when they get in there, if there's holes and doors and walls and whatnot.
So it seemed to me that the thing that they were harping on the most was getting units back online. And I don't, I don't know how to, how, suggest, I wouldn't presume to tell you how to do that, but it seems like the ones that are the easiest, get them out, get them back online quick.
Well.
And like prioritize or, and, and I know that it costs money to bring in somebody to do that painting, but if we had, I just feel like we have to get those back online super quickly.
I don't disagree with you on that all, at all on that, but just to clarify, when you say online, I'm assuming you mean rented up?
Yeah, get me, ready to be rented.
Yes, and I, I don't disagree with you in the least, however, and that is what was happening in the past, the easy units were being done first as we got people ready to go. They were going in and getting the easy ones done first. But that's why we have some units that are old on the, the vacancy report or older, because they were harder units and they've been passed over for doing the easier units and those are the ones that are hurting us. They, we need to get those leased up so they can stop counting as vacancy days because the clock is ticking on those.
Right, so.
So the goal is to get the oldest ones ready and leased up first because once they're ready, we can claim CMC, uh, changing market conditions, sorry, on those. But if they're not ready, we can't, and so to minimize the number of vacancy days, we need to get those oldest ones, number one, ready and number two, leased up.
Okay.
And Mike was sitting in the um.
Was he listening to the call?
He was in there with us, listening to the call.
Good.
And I said, and I will say, I got, I'll give Mike a, a shout-out here because he has done pretty good about getting the guys in the units and managing the emergencies and, and all of that and, and I think it's gonna go a lot better now that we have a full staff, but um, I asked him the day after the call, I said, so what was your, your big takeaway from that meeting? And he said, um, I think that we need to have units turned over in 30 days from when they are vacated. And I said, you got it, you nailed it. So, he knows what his task is and he said he's ready to, to do it. Of course, some of those have, are way past 30 days, but
Right.
you know, the, so the priority will be to get those rented, but as units vacate, he knows that he needs to get somebody in there and get those units turned.
So is he creating a schedule or a plan that he can share with you?
We have an internal, yes, uh, we have an internal document, we call it our vacancy report. Um, we don't share it outside the office because it includes last tenant name and new applicant assigned's name and various information, but and there are priority numbers on those units that he and Patrick worked to develop according to who Patrick has ready to um house.
Oh, good.
And um according to the, the date the unit was vacated. And um, so we've been paying more attention to the, the priority list to make sure that, and I, you know, I told them, I said, you, if a unit is gonna be a hard unit to turn over, we can't just pass it off until we've got everything else filled because it's killing us. You guys have to get those units done in the order they're vacated, whether they're hard or not. And I did, in talking with HUD staff today, I did tell them, you know, we have made these changes in our maintenance department, but that doesn't mean that, you know, we get, in the summertime especially, we tend to get several vacancies come available at a time, that's.
We just.
I don't, did I just go out?
Yeah, you briefly did go out there. But you're disappeared, you're gone.
How about this?
Okay, you're good.
Okay. I, I, God, I lost my train of thought again. See what happened.
Well, it's just, it's just that, how, whatever the plan is, maybe one of the things that you could report to us is, this is the plan and this is what's happening and, and maybe let us know, I don't know, week by week, you got X number of them ready and stuff so that we can say we're paying attention because they're suggesting we're not paying attention.
Well, here's one thing I think that I will start doing is um when Dustin was here, Dustin used to give me a, a monthly report. It told me um like any major repairs they had to do, it told me any, where they were with any capital fund work, capital improvements or contract work. It told me how many vacancies and what units they got ready during that month. It told me several different things and when Dustin left, we kind of got away from doing that report mostly because Perry, we were down to just Perry as the maintenance staff less thing he had to do. So, but I think what we'll do is to have Mike start doing that report again and it can.
Good idea.
It'll just be a report that I include in the um, in the board report.
I think that's a great idea and also that can, can then get included in the, in the minutes. When I said, should we addend our packets to the minutes, they said no, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna override that no. I think we should addend your report and Mandy's report to the minutes so that if anybody looks at our minutes, they have that information and they can't say we didn't, they didn't see it.
Would you like for Mike to also start attending the meetings?
What do you think, guys? I, I, I think if for some reason, because it's such a big emphasis at this moment with what's going on with this review, maybe for the next couple meetings so that we can get a handle on how he's operating and we could ask him questions?
I don't know that it offers a lot of value for his time or ours because, I mean, he, we don't really have a say in his, in what he's doing, it's not our job to manage him. So I think us having an impact on the, or information on the numbers is critical. But I think if we have questions about why those numbers aren't working, we would want to go straight to you, Joanne, versus go to him.
I can probably answer most, most questions that you might have and I can have his report. Well, we'll all have his report in the packet and, you know, I can always follow up if you ask me a question I don't know the answer to. I can always follow up after the meeting.
That would be my preference.
I, I would agree with Jamie, it seems kind of, I mean, it feels very internal. That part feels very internal, like an internal employment thing as opposed to a board-related entity. And I, so I, I agree with Jamie in saying that it probably makes the most sense or I'm most comfortable with Joanne continuing to serve in Joanne's role without having Mike directly communicating with us even though he could provide the numbers because if we're dissatisfied, then what happens or even if we're ecstatic, like that's not part of our scope.
I agree. I think that what you just said, since kind of it could potentially send a confusing message to him and, and create some confusion. But also I think it could, um, just put us in a position where that's not the board's role. And so I think it would, it would confuse a lot. And if we're looking at a potential two-hour-long meeting, that's two hours that he could be spent doing much more productive items, I think, or resting.
Probably resting. Or doing a callback.
I, I agree. Um, if we could have a report like Dustin used to give us, then we'd have a good idea. And if we had any questions about that report, we can ask you and then you can find out. I think that'd be fine.
Okay, I don't think, I don't think Dustin's reports were ever included in the board packet. I think I took information from his report and my report. But we'll just make a maintenance report to put in the board packet.
Is there a way, and maybe, Joanne, this is already what we have and I just don't know how it correlates. But is there a way to make it so that there's a, a number or numeric quantification that correlates to the rating that they're looking at? So I, I feel like they kept saying 96 or maybe 98 and 94%. They kept throwing out percentages. Is there a way to have, on whatever our report is, to have a correlation that tells us exactly where we currently at that moment stand in terms of that rating?
How many points we would get based on our number of vacancies?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would, I think, be really helpful, just to see, so that we can see how it correlates to our rating exactly. I mean, at that exact moment.
Okay.
I also, I don't know if anybody else wants this number, but I kind of feel like I'd like to see an average days offline number for units. Maybe that's just too much extra.
You don't want to see that right now.
Well, if we know what it is now, then Mike and everybody can tackle the number that, or tackle the units that are bringing it out of line first. Kind of prioritize that and give it some kind of metric to see if we're making any progress. But that might already be covered by the score.
Well, yeah, the, the difficult thing with this score is they calculate by vacancy days versus, um, months. And so we'll figure out something.
Why is it difficult if it's vacancy days?
It's just, you, um.
So are you saying that it counts more against us for the ones that have been vacant for a longer amount of time?
Yes. So when, so when it was, became vacant in, say, um, January is, say, somebody vacated the unit on January 2nd. That clock started ticking on January 3rd. And it doesn't stop till the unit is either can, ready encountered as a changing market conditions or leased.
Well, then he definitely has to do the old ones first.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to explain.
Okay, now I understand. Okay, I didn't understand that that was hurting us more.
Yes.
Okay.
Why haven't the old ones been getting done first?
Because they were the worst ones. So they, so through the, the shortage of maintenance staff that we have encountered, um, they were going to get the easiest ones first.
Okay, okay, we got it. All right, are we ready to move on to the next item? Which is the first item under new business, which is the.
At, at what point are we going to talk about the phone call that we sat in on and what our, uh, priorities are for, uh, the, 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 um, issues that they raised? Is that later in the meeting?
That's what we've been talking about.
Uh-huh. Well, you're, well, I, I have some notes also. And I just wondered if there's, uh, if anybody else does. But Patty contended that vacancy and the need for a marketing plan are the two top priorities. And, um, that we have to do something different than we have been doing uh, so HUD can see that we're willing to change as a board, as an operation. The, um, that was Tanya. The, Patty, uh, wants us to get the units ready, exclamation mark, uh, which is what we've been talking about. Uh, the unit turnover, because is, is turnover not as high a priority as the old units? So if somebody moves out, uh, and getting that unit spiffed up, if it minimal is required, which is the highest priority?
Turnover is getting the units ready for occupancy.
Is that higher than the old, getting the old units ready?
It's all turnover.
It's the same, I think, Linda, that's what, what we've been talking about is, is termed turnover in, in what they were talking about on that call. So, so us talking about like how long it takes to get those older units and the way that all flows through, that's part of the turnover number that they're looking at.
And it hurts us, and we're worse off with the old units, so we need to turn those over first.
Yeah.
And, um, um, they want us to, in our plan, uh, so let's work, uh, to move forward. They want, uh, part of our game plan to have a six-month increment, a one-year increment and a two-year increment for what are, what are our goals? We never did get anything settled about what if the public finds out about this? I don't know that we can't, we can't do anything is what we learned. The, um, HUD wants Carlson declared obsolete. And, uh, they're trying to determine if, uh, anyway, that seems to me to be what they're after uh, as a, as a priority. And the other thing is how, how can, uh, how can we reduce expenses? And key, uh, uh, to, as my note says, how to reduce expenses to reduce long-term debt? And, and related to the, uh, um, I guess the question is, your question early on, Joanne, had, was if we don't have any cash, are they really interested in us, um, um, pursuing a rad solution? Do you have any further perspective on that?
Well, there's a difference between, um, rad and repositioning. Under a, well, under most rad platforms and repositioning, under a, under most of the rad platforms, you have to have some available cash or be able to take on more debt service to, um, improve the buildings. And in some cases, they remain as public housing. In some cases, they reposition to section eight project-based or, yeah, project-based voucher. Um, so I think what, what I was trying to convey is that there are some rad platforms that we simply couldn't do because we can't take, our goal is to get rid of debt, not to incur more. And so.
Yeah, good. I am opposed to us taking on more debt. It seems to me we have enough. And, uh, so as, as part of this solution, that just doesn't make sense.
And I, and I think the, the, the game plan for six months, year and two-year, um, I think you, are you referring to the pro forma that they're asking us to create?
Yeah, the action plan, uh-huh.
Okay, in the action plan is a pro forma.
Yep.
Yeah, so that, it would be by in, in annual increment. And I did, we did briefly discuss the marketing plan today on the phone during my conversation with HUD staff. And I sent them the one that we had and indicated that some of the things had been, most of the things on there had been done. Um, we may be due for a refresher on some of them, i.e., um, uh, for instance, when I went to visit with Common Table with different organizations also. Um, so for instance, the Facebook page, it was created. But now the, to expand on that would be more frequent posting and more information about, um, available units. And also, um, one of the items on there was to improve our website. We've done that. And so to expand on that would be to utilize that more for marketing and, um, possibly do staging units and 360, 360, 360 videos to post on the website or Facebook. But, I mean, I think there's ways that we can expand on what we have already done or repeat, since it's been a while since we've done some of those things.
I think it would be good to have, to update our marketing plan as an indication of our taking steps so that we're visibly moving, uh, which I just wanted to say that. Thanks, I'll let the meeting go on. I, I just have, as these other letters have come in, we get some of these, uh, trash talking letters, I have a sense of urgency. And I just really want to have others have that sense of urgency too. Um, and, and just get moving. Visible ways so that HUD is convinced and can be convinced that we are taking action.
Linda, after.
The next steps that we need to take.
After sitting in on that call, Linda, um, I agree with you. And do you feel, I think it's important, we kind of talked about making sure some of these things are, are recognized in our meetings. Do you feel like we are taking action appropriately and at a speed that's acceptable for this?
I, I just want our minutes to start reflecting that we're taking action. And I think getting this report that is more, uh, reflective of the vacancies or offline or whatever the terms are, that makes sense to HUD. That's the language we need. And I think we commit to updating our marketing plan and saying, uh, uh, having a sheet that says, here are all the things we've accomplished. Now here's the new act, uh, marketing plan. But we have to be seen as taking action. And just continuing on the way we have been is not convincing them of anything, as far as I'm concerned. So, um, I'm wondering, um, well, anyway. So that's my pitch, I guess.
I, I think, Linda, that we all agree with you. And we think part of the problem is that they haven't been giving us credit for what we've been doing because they haven't looked at the packets that have all the information that shows that we've been doing certain things, which is why I want to addend the packet information to the minutes so that from now on, if they open the minutes, they see the packet information. That will indicate that we have gotten financial information and we have gotten, um, all of that other stuff. And we're, and today we, we suggested adding a report from Mike Motley on the, um, turning over the units. Um, and I think there were some, some other things that Mandy will make sure the words are in the minutes, um, to show that we today have already talked about two or three of those things.
I, I'd like for you, Jan, Joanne, I don't care who both, there are certain times that I think that the, the minutes are too passive away to communicate with an aggressive HUD like we have seen. We are being pushed hard. And so I think we, what we decide to do on this marketing plan, it's worth writing a little letter to them and saying, here's our old marketing plan that we've, here, we've marked what's accomplished. Here's our new marketing plan. You know, we want to call this to your attention and not just do the passive little paragraph and hope they read it. Anyway, I, I have a sense of urgency about this and I want to be seen as taking action. So if I can, uh, just, that's my message, I guess.
Linda, I, I, from a staff standpoint, I don't disagree with you. I can tell you that we have been discussing and working in the office. Um, and, I mean, some of these things are all but done already. That doesn't mean we stop being, um, thinking about what we can do better. There's always room for improvement. Um, I did send them the old marketing plan today and explained to them that we will be expanding on that.
We didn't know that.
Um, I, um, also, um, I told them that on this action plan, I was, the only thing I was really concerned about was, um, the 120 days to have the capital needs assessment. Just because, even though we're going to award the contract, um, just because, um, it's awarded and they've given us a timeframe and, and we'll, you know, do what we can to hold them to that. We're going into winter, there's weather coming. There could be COVID issues that come up that prevent them from happening. So I said, you know, can we get a little safety net on that? Because, um, I don't want that date to get here. And for some reason, out of our control, it wasn't done. And they told us those dates are fluid. If something like that happens, they will definitely ask for an extension. So.
I'd like for you to start putting some more things in writing instead of just handling them over the phone. I don't feel like they are getting registered on the HUD side when you, when we have, when you have phone conversations. Anyway, that's just my reaction to listening to some of this. So, um, I, I want you to go on with the meeting. I don't mean to sidetrack things.
Well, no, I think your, your, your input is important and, um, I, but I guess the, the item was put on the agenda because the item is, or the action plan is to be negotiated. And, um, I'm needing to know if any of the board members have any input on that action plan. If, if you don't, I mean, it's the document that was sent out, we looked at prior to the call. Like I said, they're working on the, the second tab, the performance, um, indicators or whatever it was called. But the, the, that first tab that says action plan, I don't have any particular concern with their, um, with the action plan that they have put in place. My concern was more on the second tab and the language that they were using in there. And the, if you don't do this, then we're going to require you to, um, what was it, to reposition in some form or another. And so I know that they're working on that language. Um, and hopefully we can get it negotiated down to, I don't have a problem with them saying, we'll consider. And hopefully we can get it negotiated down to, I don't have a problem with them saying, we'll consider repositioning. But, you know, I told them, we don't want to be ramrodded into it, so.
Well, in my opinion, that's what's happening, but we don't obviously have any choices. I do want to take the word volunteer, volunteer out of it, because that's not true.
The word volunteer, what?
Rad is a voluntary.
Oh, yeah.
Forget that word.
Well, the, part of the issue is that we will get more choices if we increase our occupancy number and, and our profitability. So, so that is the first step on all of this. And, and to your point, Joanne, just to answer specifically, in that call, none of us voiced or seemed to have, and I, I don't want to speak on behalf of everyone, so if someone did. But the actual action plan items that were on the third tab of the document, for anyone who recalls, they were reasonable, they were, they were out of line, they were check-in, they, they included the marketing plan, the pro forma. There, I think, were there six items? I don't have it right in front of me.
There were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven items. And they were, they were reasonable and things like Joanne said, that we already have well underway towards completion or pretty close to it. So I think the biggest thing is we need to be able to take advantage of getting all the subsidy we can. They mentioned that we left $250,000 on the table as a result of our turnover issues primarily, I think. And so that's, if we can, if we can get our financial position better, then it'll, it'll take away their ability to really be able to dictate whether or not we, what we do with, you know, the units, what we do with Rad, what we do with Carlson Plaza, although those are conversations we have to have.
It will take away their ability to dictate. And I did a little bit of, of research on some of the language they use in that second tab, like substantial, they didn't call it default, but substantial, um, well, we'll call it default for the sake of this question. And the only way they can force something like that on is if we don't improve. If we, or refuse to improve, if we just let, refuse to enter into a, an agreement to complete the action plan. I think they call it a memorandum of recovery, maybe, a MOR. But if you're not troubled, they cannot force you to do anything.
Yeah, I, I think the most important thing is getting those apartments ready to rent and getting, and at least make it, you know, marketing them as available. I think that's, that's the most critical issue, the financial, the fin, that's the financial solution. And so I, I don't know what, what you and Mike can do. I mean, hiring a couple other guys to do some painting, once they do the other stuff or whatever it costs. If it's going to get us $250,000 in subsidy and we spend $10,000 or $15,000 to get them ready, then it's worth it.
Um, I, let me just say about that, it was actually $225,000. And let me, about that, let me say that a good share of, not all, but a share of what we lost was because units were offline. Remember, we're talking about 2018. And units were offline for the apartment towers rehab and, and had to come back online because they'd reached their 36 month before the building was ever done. So that was part of our loss.
Okay, but we still-
But there's, there were units that were not done, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, I mean, the solution to pollution here is we got to get more, those apartments ready to rent and at least be trying to rent them. And that's going to take a lot of the problems off of our heads. So I think the marketing plan is, is about that. But they said we should market to students, we've been marketing to students, you know. Some of that stuff that they said we should be doing, we are doing. And so I think we need to focus on getting apartments ready to rent. I think they want to-
K-State is leaving again at Thanksgiving and won't be back until January 20th for two months.
That's right.
So this is renting, I mean, not only getting them online, but renting them is the key here too. Anyway, we have so many things to do that I just, I want, we need to figure out what we're going to work on as a board. Or is Joanne going to do it all? And does any of it involve us? And what part of the action plan are we going to get involved in? So anyway, and then we have the whole rest of the packet to go, so.
Okay, do we want to, I mean, do we want to schedule a work session maybe to discuss the marketing plan?
I think it'd be fine. I just feel, I, I feel the need to do something and I just go away and come back at certain meetings and, and, but I don't do anything. And I think I need to do-
Well, but Linda, that's not our job, our job isn't to do, isn't to do the stuff. Our job is to make sure that Joanne and the staff are doing this stuff.
I agree.
What I can do is to, um, so say, uh, update the marketing plan into a draft and send it out to the board and ask for comments and have the comments come back to me and then present something based on what I created plus comments at the next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good.
That's great. All right, should we go on to new business?
So, but just, no, just a minute. Um, so the, um, the action plan, the, there was just one thing I wanted to change and that was on the pro forma. They said to reduce expenses. The only thing I said was, I think we need to also say and increase revenue because that's key, as well as reducing expenses. That was the only particular revision I had. Is the rest of the board okay with the action plan as it stands?
The other thing that she, uh, somebody, Adam or somebody picked on the other day was that we need to cut the cost of the contracting we're doing. And I heard you say that instead of contracting out for a painting, for painters, you're going to have your three maintenance people be more, get in, more involved in painting. Are there other contracting issues that, that need to be reduced that you're aware of or you've thought about?
Yes, we, we've also discussed cutting the carpet cleaning costs. We have a carpet cleaner, it's, it's a, it's a commercial one, it's, it's a monster and it's heavy. So it's portable, but it's heavy. But Mike believes that if we get that thing serviced, that it will, um, it will work for cleaning carpets versus contracting that out. You know, part of the contract costs were up because, once again, we were short on maintenance staff and we needed to get units painted and carpets cleaned. And we even hired a cleaning company to do some of the cleaning in the units. And they did a fantastic job, but so does our staff. So, um, and that was, like, one of the things that I talked to the maintenance staff about is, you know, we, we've got more maintenance staff on board and we promoted the custodian to a maintenance worker too. So we've got to cut the contract cost because you hire a painter, you get a unit painted. You hire a maintenance staff, you get a unit painted, clean, maintenance done, et cetera. So, um, yes, that, that is our goal, to not use as many contract costs for unit turnover at the very least.
Joanne, I wanted to ask you, you were talking about you have to dedicate your staff to moving out the people's effects when they leave. Do you charge a fee for that?
Yes.
Okay, good, I hope so, uh, to try to cover that cost anyway, thank you, all right.
And if it requires a trip to the dump, we also charge them a dump fee.
Okay.
Okay, are we going to move on to new business?
Oh, let me just say one more thing.
Joanne!
I'm sorry. One of the other things we've talked about is we need, desperately need to update our schedule of tenant charges. So the charge, the, what we charge to a tenant for materials and labor when, uh, maintenance staff go into their units and do work, I think will help us out a little bit too. Because it hasn't been updated in quite some time.
Good.
So we'll be doing that. But can I just get somebody to say, yes, the board agrees or make a motion or something with the action plan?
Yeah, let's just go forward with the action plan for now. And especially, um, for now, until we receive the, the revised document that they're going to send us. But for now, let's go under the assumption that we're following the plan that we got in the first place.
So everybody is fine with the one small addition that I made?
Shake your head, yes.
When do you plan to put, finish the action plan so it can be completed? Are these things, we're talking about something we can do now if the action plan is a month off? Or is the action plan right away also?
The board, what HUD is looking for is the, the action plan document. The board is in agreement that they can live with this action plan. HUD is working on revising the language in the second tab of that document.
Okay.
Um, and I will have to bring that back to the board for discussion. And I don't know when they'll get it back to me, it may mean a special meeting.
So we're really talking about approving the tab three?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we don't need to approve definitions, do we? Yeah?
And I don't, and I don't, I don't think that we can put a time limit on the action plan, Linda.
Okay.
We just, we're going to keep plodding through it, but it, it, those things don't have end dates.
The action-
If we're going to do this marketing plan, let's let them know when we, as soon as we've got it done, instead of waiting to tuck it into the action plan. I just, you know.
Linda, the action plan has target dates for us to complete each one of those items. And so, um, the, the clock doesn't start ticking for those dates. So like, the marketing plan, I don't see it right away, it, we'll say within 60 days of execution of the agreement. So once the action plan, all, all, both tabs of the action plan are approved by HUD and us, the clock starts ticking. So within 60 days of us agreeing to both of those two documents, we will submit them a marketing plan. But it doesn't hurt to start working on it now.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's a bureaucracy and you seem to know it and you can't push it, so I have to agree.
I can't make this stuff up, Linda.
Can't be more aggressive, anyway I try.
Okay. All right, we have a couple of things we have to vote on here. So the first item is approve the independent audit report. Can I have a motion to approve that report?
I move to, I have a, a motion to approve the audit report?
Yes.
I will do that.
Okay, Kennedy makes the motion, who seconds?
Second.
Jamie seconds. Does anybody have any questions with the information that we received about that?
I do. I have a question about why so much attention to the capers pension part of that. Uh, there are like, I don't know, six pages of the audit have to do with that. But I didn't, there was no real problem with it, other than, uh, Joanne, do you know why it had such a place of prominence?
The capers information?
Yes, the capers retirement.
Yeah, um, the, Mandy might need to help me out here, but I know a couple of years ago, the, what's it called, Mandy, the Gatsby 74, is that it?
I think it's Gatsby 84.
Okay, Gatsby 84, which is then generally accounted, or generally accepted, um, something standard, maybe. It's an auditor term. But anyway, those, that, that particular regulation required capers to start being reported on the audits. Even though it's really not a liability to the housing authority because the housing authority isn't the one that's going to pay out those retirements, it's capers. It's kind of a silly requirement, if you ask me, but that's why.
So has it not been in previous audits? Is it showing up for the first time, is that the explanation?
It's been in the last couple.
I know, that's why I didn't, anyway, okay.
It's a, it's a fairly new regulation within the last couple of years.
Yeah. Uh, the other is page 24, which is the COVID. It says, um, in the middle of that big paragraph there, "There has been no immediate impact to the authority's operations. Future potential impacts may include disruptions, restrictions, yada, yada." I, I think it has had an impact. It's had an impact on our ability to rent our units. It's had an impact on our finances, so we can't fix, I mean, it, it just, I'm not, we, I don't, this is an audit. So I suppose it's, we just need to approve it. But I object actually to saying that it has no immediate impact.
But that, that was for 2019, Linda, the audits for 2019.
I don't know what COVID's doing in here then, okay, all right.
Anything else?
Because I think it's important that we have it on record.
Okay.
We did have a, a finding and it was the same findings that we kind of got geeked for in the HUD review. And that was the, um, public housing money being used to subsidize the Section 8 program and the mixed finance program. So, I mean, we're like, that, it's already been cleared, the Section 8 part of it has already been cleared. The tax credit has made, uh, the FHI property, I should say, has made progress on reimbursing the housing authority. But I put that it would have it, have it completed by the end of next year. And, um, that is the deadline that HUD gave us as well. But I just want to make sure it's reflected so nobody says we didn't talk about it.
So one, one is resolved and the other one will be resolved by the next audit, right?
By the end of next year.
And that's the, that'll be the audit, okay. We won't see it again in an audit. Yeah, we will if we wait till next year.
In 2020, you may see it in 2020 for the FHI properties, but not the Section 8.
Okay, anything else?
These are boring.
Yes, they are. Okay, if there are no further questions or, or discussion, Mandy call the question.
Anne?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And Livy?
Okay, that brings us to part B, award contract for capital need assessment. I need a motion, possible motions are on page 105. Possible motions are on page 105. Someone make a motion?
I move that we authorize the executive director or his authority to negotiate and enter into the Gil Group Incorporated for performance of our PTA and energy audit at a cost of $38,420.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, Kennedy seconds. Are there any questions about the information that we received?
Our, uh, talk about the, uh, energy audit. We have already had an energy audit in recent years, uh, and we're going to have to pay to have another one, is that correct?
Yes, HUD requires the housing authority to have an energy audit every five years. Um, and an energy audit is required, even if you've, well, I won't say for sure, but if you've had one in the last five years for RAD. So kind of dual purpose there, but, um, the energy audit is the lesser of the cost in the entire contract. Um, energy audit fee, well, for, for Gil Group was 7,200, for Dominion was 24,000, for AEI was 16,000. Um, the other two companies were, um, we really didn't get deep into their evaluations for various reasons. I mean, into their proposals, we, we did evaluate them. Um, but it wasn't broke out from the cost, um, as the others were. So, um, but I mean, we would have to be paying for that anyway, so we're kind of killing two birds with one stone here.
Okay.
We're wasting our money.
No, we don't have, it doesn't look like we have a choice. We paid, we pay for it, we pay for it as part of this or we pay for it separately, so we might as well do it all at once.
It's probably going to be cheaper to pay for it as part of this, because we would be paying some other company to travel here. It's kind of like when you have mobilization on a construction project, you know, they're going to, their mobilization is their travel fee, so.
Okay.
I would just mention that, um, we did call references and we did not get a response from all references, but those that we got were favorable. Um, we did have to negotiate with the Gil Group, who is the recommended company, um, because they had a requirement of an upfront payment of 50% of the contract cost, um, as we, as, uh, in their payment terms. And we advised them that we're not allowed under HUD regulations to make upfront payments. And so we negotiated that to say that we would pay them 25% upon completion of the inspection, 25% upon receipt of the initial report, and the remaining 50% when we receive the final reports. So, um, that was, it was good to know that they were willing to negotiate that with us. Um, overall, I think everybody felt that, um, well, the first three companies scored very high on their knowledge and ability, um, what were those? On their, uh, relevant experience, your ability to perform in a timely manner. I think it came down to cost, um, at the end of the day for the, the first three companies, which were Gil Group, Dominion Due Diligence, and AEI Consultants. And it was very, very close between AEI and Dominion Due Diligence. And after calling them and getting some clarification on their proposals, because there were several ways they could propose this, to do the CNA and then a, a non-RAD compliant one, and then a RAD compliant one, or just go straight to the RAD compliant one with the energy audit, et cetera. So after calling the, the two top rated companies to get clarification on their proposals, it turned out that Gil Group was, um, actually the lower cost and, um, some of us like the format of their reports better. So, um, the recommendation is to award the, uh, contract to Gil Group. I would ask that perhaps we could indicate that if for some reason Gil Group couldn't complete their contract, I, I don't know why not, they wouldn't be able to. I think they can, but that we would have the, um, authority to move to the second highest, which would be AEI Group or Consultants.
Okay. Anything else? No other discussion? I'm going to call the question.
Dan?
Yes.
Linda?
Linda? We can't hear you, you're muted.
There. Um, third dime's a charm. Um, so the motion that's printed is, uh, to go with the Gil Group for 38,420. And if, uh, what's the right language? If necessary, or as Plan A, and Plan B would be to go with AEI for 45,000, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the completeness of the motion. And I vote yes.
So are you making an amendment to the motion, Linda?
I, I'd be glad to, yes.
Okay. Uh, who made the initial motion? So Livy, are you willing to accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Carry on.
Um, I'm writing. Um, Kennedy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And Livy?
Yes.
Okay, guys, it is now 7:15. Do we want to reserve this executive session for, for, for this tonight?
Uh, Jan, I couldn't, uh, you're kind of cut out. Can you repeat?
Well, it's 7:15 and I think we've worked really hard tonight. We could, we could reserve this, uh, executive session for another meeting.
I would support you in that motion, Jan.
I agree.
You know, Kennedy, we can't see you anymore.
It was intentional.
There you are. You were hiding. Um, do we want to schedule a special meeting for the purpose of that? I know it's, it's concerning the hiring and I don't know how, um, how much in a hurry we are to get that accomplished.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we want to, uh, if you want, we could schedule a special meeting and discuss marketing plan if you want, or you could schedule a special one just for that purpose? I mean, just for the executive session.
Um, when is this marketing plan? When do we have to have that done?
Not till like, at least 60 days after this whole thing, uh, the, the whole action plan is done and we find that we agree with it.
We do not buy it, any, or even just a conversation with the work members, that person.
Livy, we can't hear you.
Be the whole board.
We can't hear Livy. Livy, we can't hear you.
Uh, well, I, um, I, I think they're going to want to hear from the whole board. It can be done at the next meeting. I think that's fine.
The marketing plan. But there's some urgency to get this plan for the hiring organized. Am I correct, Kennedy?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, here's the thing, I think, I think if we did it and everything was ready to go by December, like, if we finished it in our November session, we should be fine, because we just want to make sure that we have enough hiring time. What do you think, Jamie?
Well, the only thing we really wanted to talk about tonight, and this doesn't have to, without us talking about it, we don't need to go into executive session, was just to set the parameters of the salary. And honestly, Kennedy and I talked about it a little bit, and I think that it's already set within our, um, within the budget and information we have. So really, it's just a matter of us moving forward with getting a job listing, but we don't even have to list the salary in a job listing necessarily, because that's not going to be a commitment in there yet. So realistically, we just, we just need to have the position description okayed, which we've already basically done, so.
One important.
And you were, but you were going to, you were going to create a, a shorter version of that.
Yeah, I have a shorter version and I can send that out. I think we can do that via email.
Yeah, I agree.
One important thing we'll, um, need to know is the salary range, because we're going to be presenting next year's budget pretty soon.
Yeah. When will you present next year's budget?
Uh, well, we can do it at a December meeting.
You mean, you're talking about presenting it to us?
Yes. You have to approve it.
Okay, so, um, I think you're talking about doing that in the December meeting?
At the very latest.
The budget year starts January.
Yeah.
Right. So I, I, I still think that we would be okay, we're on the trajectory, we're not going to know how much the person is going to get hired for by then, probably, because they won't be hired, but we will have a range. And how much of a, how much of a rough range do you need, Joanne?
Um, probably from low, well, probably we need to, we can budget at the highest amount that, in the range, and we would be safe.
But for pro forma purposes, we also have already discussed that the salary needs to reflect, that's a good area that we can start considering some adjustments in, is not just that salary, but the salary in general, so.
But what is the range you're looking at, Jamie?
Well, I think if we're going to talk about that, we probably need to go into executive session. And so I think we should wait, we either need to just do it or we wait till the fifth, till November's meeting and have a full discussion on it.
Please.
Okay.
And I agree with Kennedy in that I don't think there's an urgency at this moment to do so. I think that if we wanted to proceed with posting the position, we could go ahead and do that regardless.
So, so do, so presumably you've written the shorter version of, of the job description.
Yeah, so I have a really short.
So all we need.
And then we'll have the longer version for the actual people we interview.
Right, the applicant.
So is your short, is your short version what you plan to advertise with? Yeah, I'll send that to you before we ever put it out. So I'll send it to the board and then just get back, get the feedback like I did last time. Okay, good.
Because it doesn't require a board approval, we just want, you know, that, that, I don't believe would require a board approval, that just for the description and the listing. So that's just more for information purposes.
I think the position description is what we were after, and, um, I don't have an issue with the shortened version for the advertising purposes.
That's correct.
There's more for us to talk about. You're absolutely right. Okay.
Just, just a suggestion, you can, um, you can advertise and to, to let people know the position is open and draw interest and ask them to contact us for a copy of the job description. Um, that way, it would save on advertising costs, I'm just thinking out loud.
Okay. So say that again, Joanne, please. You're saying, basically, we can just say, "This position is available," and contact for the full job description or contact for a shorter job description?
For the short one.
Give a contact, um, email or phone number or both for, to obtain a full job description and, um, uh, application requirements.
For the short, the short version.
Well, I don't think you want to say short version or long version. I would say for the complete job description.
No, but I'm just saying for Kennedy's, Kennedy's question is, we're going to say, "If you're interested, we'll send you," and we'll send, what we're going to be sending is the short version, and then people who express interest and want to know more, we can deal with that.
I think our, I think we handle it just like everyone else, where we post our, our job listing and then ask for them to send us their application and resumes, and then we, if they have additional information they need, that happens after the fact. I mean, we'll give them enough information that they'll be able to make the first tier of decisions, and then when, when and if there's additional conversations after that, then we can provide greater detail. It's not like we're not going to have any information out there.
That's right. And so do we want to just do that without having further discussion?
I think the plan is that we were going to send it out for, just for general information purposes, not for approval, once it's ready, so that everyone can kind of just see what's out there and potentially offer feedback or, you know, consider applicants, consider people that you might know that could be a fit, people that, you know, that officially opens the door for us to start considering applicants. So I think that's the only reason that we should be talking about it right now, is so that that door can officially open sooner than later.
I'd like to see the position description one more time. Okay, yeah, and the one that, so I'll send you, I'll send both. I'll send the short version and I'll send the long version. And I need to talk to you of your, one of your recommendations, Linda, just so I can have more specifics, uh, on the longer description, but it wasn't as imperative to have that information for the shorter description, because that one's a little bit more broad or a little bit broader in its context. We'll get in touch with me, yeah, okay. Will do.
Sounds good. Okay, so, um, that's the only thing in this that would be left for us to do tonight. So I'm going to say it's time for a glass of wine, so let's adjourn.
Somebody needs to get in touch with Phil and pass the, what we did tonight on to him.
Okay. Joanne, will you do that?
I, I will.
Cool.
Contact Phil and tell him what we're doing.
Maybe Ida, I don't know how engaged Ida is right now.
Okay. And Ida? Okey doke. Are we done?
Yep.
Yes.
My, my brain is exploding.
Mine too, I'm tired of this.
Okay.
I need to go eat something. Thank you.
Let's go, let's all go have dinner.
Let's go do it. Okay, bye.
Thanks so much, Mandy. Thanks so much, Joanne. Bye.
Good night all, bye.
Bye.
Joanne?
Yes?
Don't forget to hit stop.
Yeah.